The 6:00 PM, Monday, October 2nd, 2017. Planning Commission meeting is called to order. If we could have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Klyot.
Here.
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Here.
Commissioner Wykoff.
Commissioner Hearn.
Here.
And Chair Noble.
Here. Now, we will proceed with the swearing-in of the new members.
I can do that if you'd like.
Stand and raise your right hand. After I say "aye," say your names and go do it together. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
Charter and Code of ordinances of the City of Madera Beach.
The Charter, the ordinances and codes of the City of Madera Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
Of Madera Beach.
Of Madera Beach.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. And now, we'll proceed to Item 4, Approval of the Minutes from July 31st, 2017.
Move for approval.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
You have to do a move to second. Okay.
Is that satisfied?
Yes.
Can we have a vote?
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Yes.
Second Vice -- oh, sorry. Commissioner Wykoff. Commissioner Hearn.
Yes.
Commissioner Klyot.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr. And Chair Noble.
Yes. And Item Number 5, On to New Business. A, To Consider a Redevelopment Plan for Property Located at 374-145th Avenue East. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild within the same footprint a single-family residence on this property. The property is zoned R2, Low Density, Multi-Family Residential, and has a future land use designation of RM Residential Medium. Do we have the city background? Can you guys give us a little fill-in here?
Certainly. I'm supposed to do a brief summary, just a little overview of the quasi-judicial procedure. So, just very briefly on quasi-judicial proceedings. That is what this is. And the Planning Commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Planning Commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Planning Commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordnances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Planning Commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. The standards to be applied in the application and evidence are set forth in Section 11097, and that will be discussed further by Mr. Cernan. The burden of proof in a hearing such as this is the greater weight of evidence. And further, competent, substantial evidence must be fact-based, material, and relevant, not generalized, not personal preferences, and not irrelevant or immaterial to the issues at hand. The parties in this particular proceeding are Dale and Dixie Calchovan. That is the applicant and the City. The order of presentation by the Code, Section 2-9, unless modified, is that the applicant goes first, the City goes second, other parties that have registered would be third, if there are any such. The public may speak, and then rebuttal by the applicant and the City. That's a basic overview. I would first ask, before we start, if there had any board members have received any ex-party communications from anyone regarding this matter?
I have not.
No.
I have not.
I have not.
Then I would proceed with an oath for any witnesses that might appear in this matter. If you would please come forward and... Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And are we going to stick to the three minutes?
Oh, I mean, this is the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, I'm sorry.
I think I can hold to three minutes, anyway. I'm Tom Smith, GHD Construction Services, and I'm representing Dale and Dixie Calchovan. In your packet, you received an existing survey of the Calchovan home, which every one, the front, the side, and the rear setbacks are all non-conforming to what your zoning is today. Also, of course, the house is built on grade, which is not the best thing in the world in today's FEMA world. What the Calchovans would like to do, build a brand-new home, all-new standards, FEMA, etc., and you'll notice on another, the second diagram that I did give you is the proposed site plan. The front setback will exceed what the City requires as to, I believe, the two sides. Louis, I think it's five foot on each side. This is going to be about six foot. The problem is just the rear setback. Existing rear setback, if this was a brand-new vacant lot, would be 25 feet. And this very, very non-conforming lot, which is the problem, a pie-shaped lot, they just can't fit the house on there. So, they're asking just, right now, the rear setback is, first of all, the front and the sides are now going to conform, which they weren't before, but the rear setback can't be 25 feet. Right now, it's about five feet, and it's going to go to about 15 or 16 feet, much, much better than what they've got there now. So, they're asking for some relief, basically, on just the back setback, improving what's there now, but not in full conformity. As Mr. Cernan and I have discussed, that Section 11097, the redevelopment code, allows a house to be rebuilt on the general same footprint, but in this case, we're even making it better, except the rear setback. The Calchovans can't make the 25 feet. This will be better for the neighbors on both sides for more view, instead of it being five feet off the property line, it's going back about 15 or 16 feet. So, that's -- it's pretty basic. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Well, the new business is... The 6:00 PM, Monday, October 2nd, 2017. Planning Commission meeting is called to order. If we could have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Klyot.
Here.
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Here.
Commissioner Wykoff.
Commissioner Hearn.
Here.
And Chair Noble.
Here. Now, we will proceed with the swearing-in of the new members.
I can do that if you'd like.
Stand and raise your right hand. After I say "aye," say your names and go do it together. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
Charter and Code of ordinances of the City of Madera Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
Of Madera Beach.
Of Madera Beach.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. And now, we'll proceed to Item 4, Approval of the Minutes from July 31st, 2017.
Move for approval.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
You have to do a move to second. Okay.
Is that satisfied?
Yes.
Can we have a vote?
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Yes.
Second Vice -- oh, sorry. Commissioner Wykoff. Commissioner Hearn.
Yes.
Commissioner Klyot.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr. And Chair Noble.
Yes. And Item Number 5, On to New Business. A, To Consider a Redevelopment Plan for Property Located at 374-145th Avenue East. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild within the same footprint a single-family residence on this property. The property is zoned R2, Low Density, Multi-Family Residential, and has a future land use designation of RM Residential Medium. Excuse me. Do we have the city background? Can you guys give us a little fill-in here?
Certainly. I'm supposed to do a brief summary, just a little overview of the quasi-judicial procedure. So, just very briefly on quasi-judicial proceedings. That is what this is. And the Planning Commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Planning Commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Planning Commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordnances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Planning Commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. The standards to be applied in the application and evidence are set forth in Section 11097, and that will be discussed further by Mr. Cernan. The burden of proof in a hearing such as this is the greater weight of evidence. And further, competent, substantial evidence must be fact-based, material, and relevant, not generalized, not personal preferences, and not irrelevant or immaterial to the issues at hand. The parties in this particular proceeding are Dale and Dixie Calchovan. That is the applicant and the City. The order of presentation by the Code, Section 2-9, unless modified, is that the applicant goes first, the City goes second, other parties that have registered would be third, if there are any such. The public may speak, and then rebuttal by the applicant and the City. That's a basic overview. I would first ask, before we start, if there had any board members have received any ex-party communications from anyone regarding this matter?
I have not.
No.
I have not.
I have not.
Then I would proceed with an oath for any witnesses that might appear in this matter. If you would please come forward and... Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And are we going to stick to the three minutes?
Oh, I mean, this is the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, I'm sorry.
I think I can hold to three minutes, anyway. I'm Tom Smith, GHD Construction Services, and I'm representing Dale and Dixie Calchovan. In your packet, you received an existing survey of the Calchovan home, which every one, the front, the side, and the rear setbacks are all non-conforming to what your zoning is today. Also, of course, the house is built on grade, which is not the best thing in the world in today's FEMA world. What the Calchovans would like to do, build a brand-new home, all-new standards, FEMA, etc., and you'll notice on another, the second diagram that I did give you is the proposed site plan. The front setback will exceed what the City requires as to, I believe, the two sides. Louis, I think it's five foot on each side. This is going to be about six foot. The problem is just the rear setback. Existing rear setback, if this was a brand-new vacant lot, would be 25 feet. And this very, very non-conforming lot, which is the problem, a pie-shaped lot, they just can't fit the house on there. So, they're asking just, right now, the rear setback is, first of all, the front and the sides are now going to conform, which they weren't before, but the rear setback can't be 25 feet. Right now, it's about five feet, and it's going to go to about 15 or 16 feet, much, much better than what they've got there now. So, they're asking for some relief, basically, on just the back setback, improving what's there now, but not in full conformity. As Mr. Cernan and I have discussed, that Section 11097, the redevelopment code, allows a house to be rebuilt on the general same footprint, but in this case, we're even making it better, except the rear setback. The Calchovans can't make the 25 feet. This will be better for the neighbors on both sides for more view, instead of it being five feet off the property line, it's going back about 15 or 16 feet. So, that's -- it's pretty basic. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Well, the new business is... The 6:00 PM, Monday, October 2nd, 2017. Planning Commission meeting is called to order. If we could have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Klyot.
Here.
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Here.
Commissioner Wykoff.
Commissioner Hearn.
Here.
And Chair Noble.
Here. Now, we will proceed with the swearing-in of the new members.
I can do that if you'd like.
Stand and raise your right hand. After I say "aye," say your names and go do it together. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
Charter and Code of ordinances of the City of Madera Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
As a member of the Planning Commission of the City.
Of Madera Beach.
Of Madera Beach.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. And now, we'll proceed to Item 4, Approval of the Minutes from July 31st, 2017.
Move for approval.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
You have to do a move to second. Okay.
Is that satisfied?
Yes.
Can we have a vote?
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Yes.
Second Vice -- oh, sorry. Commissioner Wykoff. Commissioner Hearn.
Yes.
Commissioner Klyot.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr. And Chair Noble.
Yes. And Item Number 5, On to New Business. A, To Consider a Redevelopment Plan for Property Located at 374-145th Avenue East. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild within the same footprint a single-family residence on this property. The property is zoned R2, Low Density, Multi-Family Residential, and has a future land use designation of RM Residential Medium. Excuse me. Do we have the city background? Can you guys give us a little fill-in here?
Certainly. I'm supposed to do a brief summary, just a little overview of the quasi-judicial procedure. So, just very briefly on quasi-judicial proceedings. That is what this is. And the Planning Commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Planning Commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Planning Commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordnances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Planning Commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. The standards to be applied in the application and evidence are set forth in Section 11097, and that will be discussed further by Mr. Cernan. The burden of proof in a hearing such as this is the greater weight of evidence. And further, competent, substantial evidence must be fact-based, material, and relevant, not generalized, not personal preferences, and not irrelevant or immaterial to the issues at hand. The parties in this particular proceeding are Dale and Dixie Calchovan. That is the applicant and the City. The order of presentation by the Code, Section 2-9, unless modified, is that the applicant goes first, the City goes second, other parties that have registered would be third, if there are any such. The public may speak, and then rebuttal by the applicant and the City. That's a basic overview. I would first ask, before we start, if there had any board members have received any ex-party communications from anyone regarding this matter?
I have not.
No.
I have not.
I have not.
Then I would proceed with an oath for any witnesses that might appear in this matter. If you would please come forward and... Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And are we going to stick to the three minutes?
Oh, I mean, this is the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, I'm sorry.
I think I can hold to three minutes, anyway. I'm Tom Smith, GHD Construction Services, and I'm representing Dale and Dixie Calchovan. In your packet, you received an existing survey of the Calchovan home, which every one, the front, the side, and the rear setbacks are all non-conforming to what your zoning is today. Also, of course, the house is built on grade, which is not the best thing in the world in today's FEMA world. What the Calchovans would like to do, build a brand-new home, all-new standards, FEMA, etc., and you'll notice on another, the second diagram that I did give you is the proposed site plan. The front setback will exceed what the City requires as to, I believe, the two sides. Louis, I think it's five foot on each side. This is going to be about six foot. The problem is just the rear setback. Existing rear setback, if this was a brand-new vacant lot, would be 25 feet. And this very, very non-conforming lot, which is the problem, a pie-shaped lot, they just can't fit the house on there. So, they're asking just, right now, the rear setback is, first of all, the front and the sides are now going to conform, which they weren't before, but the rear setback can't be 25 feet. Right now, it's about five feet, and it's going to go to about 15 or 16 feet, much, much better than what they've got there now. So, they're asking for some relief, basically, on just the back setback, improving what's there now, but not in full conformity. As Mr. Cernan and I have discussed, that Section 11097, the redevelopment code, allows a house to be rebuilt on the general same footprint, but in this case, we're even making it better, except the rear setback. The Calchovans can't make the 25 feet. This will be better for the neighbors on both sides for more view, instead of it being five feet off the property line, it's going back about 15 or 16 feet. So, that's -- it's pretty basic. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. unless modified, is that the applicant goes first, the city goes second. Other parties that have registered would be third, if there are any such. The public may speak, and then rebuttal by the applicant and the city. That's a basic overview. I would first ask, before we start, if there had any board members have received any ex-party communications from anyone regarding this matter.
I have not.
No.
I have not.
I have not.
Then I would proceed with an oath for any witnesses that might appear in this matter, if you would please come forward and... Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And are we going to stick to the three minutes?
Oh, I mean, this is the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, I'm sorry.
I think I can hold to three minutes, anyway. I'm Tom Smith, GHD Construction Services, and I'm representing Dale and Dixie Calchovan. In your packet, you received an existing survey of the Calchovan home, which every one, the front, the side, and the rear setbacks are all non-conforming to what your zoning is today. Also, of course, the house is built on grade, which is not the best thing in the world, in today's FEMA world. What the Calchovans would like to do, build a brand-new home, all-new standards, FEMA, et cetera. And you'll notice on another, the second diagram that I did give you is the proposed site plan. The front setback will exceed what the city requires, as do, I believe, the two sides. Louis, I think it's five foot on each side. This is going to be about six foot. The problem is just the rear setback, existing rear setback. If this was a brand-new vacant lot, would be 25 feet. And this very, very non-conforming lot, which is the problem, a pie-shaped lot, they just can't fit the house on there. So, they're asking just, right now, the rear setback is... First of all, the front and the sides are now going to conform, which they weren't before, but the rear setback can't be 25 feet. Right now, it's about five feet, and it's going to go to about 15 or 16 feet, much, much better than what they've got there now. So, they're asking for some relief, basically, on just the back setback, improving what's there now, but not in full conformity. As Mr. Serna and I have discussed, that Section 110-97, the redevelopment code, allows a house to be rebuilt on the general same footprint, but in this case, we're even making it better, except the rear setback, the Calchovans can't make the 25 feet. This will be better for the neighbors on both sides, for more view, instead of it being five feet off the property line. It's going back about 15 or 16 feet. So, that's -- it's pretty basic. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Well, the new construction, obviously, will be within the FEMA guidelines.
By law, absolutely.
Yes, right, so...
Very nice house, not a mega mansion. It's a nice house, and be very, very nice for the neighborhood, which all these neighborhoods need some newer house product there, for certain. And, but it'll all meet FEMA. All 150 mile-an-hour wind and hurricane windows, just everything the way it should be. New homes built today.
Built up out of the floodplain and...
Big time, yep. And we do it, the flood, I think the code calls for, I forget on this site, I'm going to call it 10 or 11 feet.
It was 11 feet.
11 feet here. And then, you know, we, the code says, go up one foot above that. We don't, we go usually two or more, because FEMA's going to change that to begin with. And then, all of a sudden, you build a brand-new house for somebody, and they got to go on back and pay all this extra flood insurance again, because the code changed, that wouldn't be fair. So, we're making these houses, first-floor living, usually about three foot above the requirement, so that when they raise that, the customer still doesn't get nailed for these huge premiums that are coming. It's going to be a real problem here, come next year, FEMA, after the three hurricanes. Yes, ma'am?
Why are, you know, it's required that there be 20 feet in the front, but you're going to propose 24. Would it make sense to take a little off of that and fix the back?
Yes, it would, but you can't, because my side setbacks, this is a pot...
Slides.
The house can't go up there, there wouldn't be enough room on the sides.
Okay.
Yep. That's it, okay. Any other questions, I'm here.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, under the order of things, the city would go next.
I'm sorry, city, would you please go?
Yes, Louis Serna, Calvin Giridawan Associates, presenting staff comments. I know we have some new members, and these redevelopment applications are not very common, even to the existing members. I think we had one last month, but beyond that, it's been a while. So, I'll just refresh your memory or give you a little education on what the redevelopment section of the code is. Section 11097 allows redevelopment of non-conforming properties subject to meeting current construction standards, including the base flood elevation standard, maximum height standards, and current building codes. You do not have to meet current setback standards, because these properties are non-conforming, and meeting the current setback standards would not be possible in a lot of cases, or in most cases. You just have to be, at least be, as non-conforming in regard to the setbacks and building coverage as the existing non-conforming development. And so, basically, you have to be, have the same footprint or better than the current footprint, the current non-conforming footprint of the building. The purpose is to incentivize people to redevelop their non-conforming properties. In this case, we have a property that's built at grade, doesn't meet FEMA requirements. This allows them an incentive to rebuild it to the current flood standard. If they had to meet setbacks, they may have to reduce the property below size. It would make it economical for them to redevelop. So, this section of the code provides that incentive by allowing the Board of Commissioners to approve their redevelopment. The applicant has indicated, and it is in your packet, there is an existing survey of the property, as well as a proposed site plan of the development. So, if you have any questions as far as what's existing and what is proposed, it is in the packet. We have included, on Page 2 of the staff report, a table of the required zoning district standards of the R2 zoning district, the existing development, and the proposed development. And in blue text, it indicates where the existing or the non-conforming are, or the existing and the proposed development are non-conforming. So, we found that this does meet the standards. It would exceed the front setback requirement. It would not meet the rear setback requirement of 25 feet, but it does exceed the existing development standards. And in regard to the side, they do meet the five-foot minimum now, as proposed, and the total would be 10 feet. Based on these findings, staff is recommending approval of the proposal, of the proposed redevelopment. We recommend that you forward this on to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation of approval, subject to four conditions, which are on Page 3 of your report. These conditions are, first, that the proposed reconstruction shall be for a single-family residence. Second, the proposed redevelopment shall be within the same, within the footprint and setbacks as shown on the redevelopment plan submitted with this application, and that is the one that is in your packet. Third, that the proposed redevelopment shall be consistent with the proposed development standards, as indicated in the comparison table of this report. And fourth, the proposed redevelopment shall comply with the existing building codes in effect at the time of permitting for such redevelopment, including floodplain regulations, which is the requirement of the code. Again, our recommendation is for approval, subject to those four conditions, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. And now, we go to the public?
Can I just verify with the clerk that next in these, on the procedures would be parties that filed a notice of intent to be an affected party? Nobody did that?
No one filed anything, no.
So, next would be the public?
We have, well, yes, we do have a public, somebody that wants to speak. I thought you meant, like, turn in something, I'm sorry.
No, there's a procedure under the code where you have to do that five days ahead of the hearing with the community development department. And it gives you more of a status as a party, but I just wanted to verify that was not done.
No, it was not received.
Now, we will go to the public?
My name is Peter Trot, 378 145th Avenue, next-door neighbor. I object to the plan. It is wrong. It is including another eight feet beyond the original footprint. I don't have a problem if they stick to the footprint. I don't care what they do up front, whatever. But the survey that they're presenting with the back eight feet was nothing more than two-by-sixes. And in fact, the last storm took out my satellite and damaged my roof as it went over the top. It was secured to two-by-sixes with three-inch lags, and it ended up in the front yard, up against my guesthouse across the street. I have microfiche that St. Pete College has retrieved. It shows the footprint of the existing building. The footprint, in fact, doesn't make the 25, it makes 24. But what they're wanting to do is move it to 16. Now, what that does, when the sun goes down, I look at the side of his building. My pool is there, and what they're doing is looking down in my pool. The fact is, if it complies with the code, then I don't have a problem. But the footprint presented by the city is wrong. And I think that I can prove that. I do have the records from the St. Pete College. The bottom line is, Lynn Rosetti, when we had a variance hearing before, said, "Well, I can't find the building permit." There was no building permit. Russ Wilson put it there, and I should have complained then. Good guys get head. I was going to use another word. The bottom line is, I think the construction they were going to do will be good construction, they did a nice job on the seawall. Fact is, I don't need to have somebody looking down in my pool. And if, in fact, they stick to the footprint that was originally there, it doesn't make 25 feet, it makes 24. And what they're wanting to do is reduce it to 16. And I don't have a problem with the side, I don't have a problem with the front. I don't have a problem with them rebuilding the, with the home. I don't care how many stories they go up, as long as they stick to the footprint on the back according to the seawall. And the bottom line, as I see it, is they have a fictitious survey there that says it was 16 feet. That was two-by-sixes with a lag bolt holding, that didn't hold. It went across the street, took out my antenna, damaged my roof, and ended up in my front porch across the street. I don't have a problem if you take the footprint of the home that was there. If you extend it eight feet, I'm afraid I'm going to have to appeal it. And the fact is, I think, I'd like to see a new house there. I, that they don't live there, the boy, their son does. What my problem is, is the fictitious footprint. They're counting a two-by-six flat on the ground with a cover over it, held down by three-inch lag bolts. And I have the pictures of what it was. Now, if you're going to approve a variance, it's actually not a variance, I don't know why R2 doesn't maintain. The fact is, I don't even, I couldn't even find RM. But the fact is, in my, in my mind, are we going to do R2? Can I change mine, do R-medium 2, whatever that means? But I think it's a shot in the dark to add eight feet to the home. There's plenty of room on that lot, the non-conform on the sides, even conform on the front. But don't take my sunset away from me. Don't make my pool their, their view. I think that that eight feet, although it doesn't, 24 feet doesn't make the 25. I don't care about that. Existing footprint, existing footprint. And I don't have a problem.
Anybody else from the public to speak?
Anybody have questions?
Any questions from the members?
Yes, I'd like to say something. And if I looked at the chart that we could review as commissioners, I'd just like to point out one factor, comparing the requirements for the zoning we have, the existing house that sits on that lot, and the proposed development. I note easily that this house that is being proposed is going down in a coverage from the present house of 1,864 square feet. Now, this proposed house is 1,680. So, obviously, this is smaller than the house that is presently sitting on the lot. And that is done through the work of our staff, and I appreciate that information. And I think, as a commission, we are here to abide by the ordinances that we have. And we need to look, if people are willing to come into our community and improve our community. I know we don't look at economics as a planning commission, but this is for the overall good, a better structure for Madera Beach. Myself, as a commissioner, I'm very pleased to see that someone is willing to go ahead and do that. And I like the idea, too, of being set back farther from the water, going from the six feet, as the house is now, to 15 feet. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to say that Mr. Schaefer told us that we, as long as we met four of the requisites, that this looks like it could work, that for sure, it's going to be a single-family, that the redevelopment plan has been presented to the city for review, that the proposed plan comparison table is with us, which we have, and that the building codes are met. And the fact that it is going to be made smaller, and we already know we have a problem with the size of the lot, I just wanted to make sure that those things are noted.
Very good. Yes, I understand the frustration sometimes that comes along with this redevelopment, since I've been on this board for a while. And it's unique here in the city of Madera Beach that we do have these smaller, odd-shaped lots. And if we stuck by the current codes, we'd have a couple bowling alleys that we could build on some of these places, if they were long enough for a bowling lane. So, all these other ones that have come before us, we've approved them. And I think that we have to move forward. And does anybody have a motion they would like to make?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, I was just curious if, actually, if anybody had any questions of the member of the public who could have asked questions. If not, the next order would be if the applicant had rebuttal or the city had rebuttal. So, I just offer that.
Any questions for the public? All right, he could have his rebuttal.
Just, just very simply, in all due respect to this gentleman, he's got the wrong figures. This house is going to be set way back, a whole lot further. It's not eight foot closer, it's 10 foot further back. So, I don't want to get in an argument on it, but this thing is properly drawn by a licensed surveyor, and the house is going to be much more beneficial for the neighborhood and for himself.
Can the public have a rebuttal as well?
Yes, the city can have a rebuttal as well, if they wish.
Public?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the city, I meant the city.
Oh. City have anything to add?
Uh, no rebuttal.
Okay. Can we let him?
The footprint of the house, as it sits this very minute, I don't have a problem with. What they have drawn up is not the footprint of the house as it sits there today.
And all the other ones we have passed has been a carbon copy of the footprint, if you will. So, this is a little bit different, that they're asking to reduce it. And to me, I don't see that should be a problem. If they're reducing it from the footprint, and the setbacks are going to be more conformed, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I guess if the next would be, if you would close the public hearing, and then you would have discussion.
All right, if we have no one else from the public, then we'll close it and have a discussion amongst the commissioners.
I think it's a good idea to approve anything in Madera Beach, and this sounds like a true improvement.
Do you have anything there? Then I will close the discussion portion. And do we have a...
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning, as stated from, yes. I make a motion to approve the rezoning of the, rezoning and the applicant's.
Well, I think it's a, it's not a rezoning.
Give me the wordage, give me the wordage.
It's a redevelopment plan.
Motion to approve, is that good enough?
That is good enough, except in this situation, I think you definitely have to include the four recommendations by the staff.
Including four recommendations by city staff, thank you.
I second that motion.
Can we have the roll call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Cliot, Commissioner Wykoff, Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Hearn.
Yes.
I'm sorry, First Vice Chair Beloski.
Yes.
Chernobyl.
And we have no old business, apparently? And a report from the interim city manager?
I have no report for you tonight, thank you.
Interim city attorney, do you have a report this evening?
No specific report. I think you recall that you had asked about some additional training on some of the, some of the legal issues involved, and the interim city attorney presented a memorandum for everybody's review and consideration. I don't know if the new members had the opportunity, but I said I would answer, try to answer any questions if you all had it. It's a very comprehensive memorandum, and you can read it a few times.
I have, I have a question. It's a quasi-judicial proceeding always for us, in planning?
Yes, your function as a planning commission is entirely quasi-judicial.
Is that something that the city does, or the county does, or?
That's, it's a function of any government. So it can, and you are a two-level process. You have the planning commission that makes the recommendation, and then the city commission acts in the same way. So they are also quasi-judicial. They're making a decision about facts applied to the law, which you just did.
If I could ask a question. When they are acting as the LPA, they're advisory to the legislative process. So when they hear these positions, petitions, they are specifically quasi-judicial, but there are times when they are just advisory in the legislative process. But we'll be very specific with them when they're doing land use, comprehensive planning, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I saw that in your code provision. There are times the city commission can ask you to do other tasks, which I haven't seen that so far, but.
That hasn't, that doesn't come around regularly, but when you do rezonings and land use changes, or comprehensive plan changes, those are not quasi-judicial. But we'll be very specific with you as to what the type of authority and the breadth of your authority or your responsibility each time we come to you.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And does this, the packet here, go into the Sunshine Law at all?
It did.
It did, so it's all in here for we can read and review?
Yes, and it does kinda tie with quasi a little bit, because the whole idea of quasi-judicial is that you decide only based on what happens here. So you cannot, you know, you can't take input outside of this hearing. And I know it's very easy, a neighbor or somebody's gonna ask you a question about something, or they're just interested, but you just basically have to decline, you cannot have conversations about what happens here, or what could happen here. You have to do that before, you know, as a group, and you can't do it amongst each other, either. So that's, that's the basic guidelines.
And then after, then you may, like after, after the meeting and the, between us and the city council, or are we not supposed to talk about it until after the city council has made their decision?
I guess the city council is precluded themselves from having, so you would, you would be outside, they have to consider what they get. So they're considering your recommendation that, that happens at this meeting, that's what they consider.
It's kinda strange when you're there to serve the public and you can't talk to the public, but that's the law, and that's what we have to do.
Think about it, if it wasn't that way, you could be talking to every developer or everybody with a monetary interest, so everything is done here, it's open to, to the public, for everybody to see.
Very good, thank you, sir. Planning and zoning department, do you have anything?
Yes. There were some administrative issues we wanted to go over with you. To begin with, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. This is my first meeting, and I look forward to many meetings ahead. I think we have a lot of work to do. Some of you have talked to me already about issues in the code, and the, and the comp plan, and just general planning issues, and so I look forward to digging through everything with you and, and taking this journey. I wanted to talk to you a couple things about procedures. To begin with, the first thing on my list tonight is elections. In October, you are obligated, according to the ordinance, to elect your chair and your two vice chairs, first vice chair and a second vice chair. There doesn't appear to be any opportunity for you to waive that till you have a full board, and so, according to the ordinance, it just says you need to do that in October. So, tonight you need to make your nominations and take your votes. You could nominate or elect somebody who's not here, just so you know, there's no stipulation that it has to be a present member, but I suggest that you go forward with that now.
All right, let's proceed with the elections. Do we have any nominations?
Yes, I was pleased to be elected as first vice chair at our last meeting in July, and, but, and I would also like to, I know our present chairman works often, I don't mean to, to, you know, go on step on any toes, but I know you have a busy schedule. I would be glad to serve as chairman of the planning commission. Also, I don't know what protocol would, I don't know if you want the position again, I have no idea, 'cause we can't talk about any of these things. When I served on a county commission, you had time to talk about these things, who was interested in positions, which I think with this quasi-judicial, it kind of ties our hands a little bit. But, if this is a position that the present chairman did not, does not want, I would be glad to serve as that. I'm retired, I have had five years' experience in my former city on a planning commission as a vice chairman, and I served three elected terms of office as a county commission in my other state. So, I am not trying to create a problem, I am just bringing up that if this is something you didn't want, I would be glad to serve in that position.
Now, this is something I've been waiting for, and I've been on the commission for eight years.
Oh, okay. Well, I couldn't discuss it.
So, it was a temporary thing, and now we have to make it official.
Okay.
So, do we have any nominations?
I nominate you.
Then if, or you could nominate yourself.
Okay, okay. I nominate myself, or second it?
I second it.
Now, do we vote on it?
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wykoff? Commissioner Cliot?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Beloski?
Yes.
Chernobyl.
Yes. I would make a.
You don't have to sound so happy about that.
I'm very happy, I had a, you know, I'm sorry I was late today, and yes, I do work a lot, but I make time for the planning commission, and I've dedicated time, and I'm very honored to be the chairman and on the commission for all these many years.
Thank you.
Do we have a nomination for, I wish some of these other guys were here, I mean, I would nominate Michael Wykoff to be the first chair.
I think we should nominate Robin.
Thank you.
I second that.
Can we take that? We have a nomination for first chair? Go to the vote.
Commissioner Wykoff? Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Cliot?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski? Commissioner Carr and Chernobyl.
Now, do we need a second vice chair?
Who was nominated for first vice chair?
Robin.
I thought you just got elected chair.
No, no.
I withdrew.
That was first, first vice.
I, so I withdrew, I did not know, 'cause we couldn't discuss. The problem is, we couldn't discuss who wanted to do what. So, when, and I, when we had the meeting in July, no one knew about a first vice chair, and I just threw my name out, 'cause we couldn't discuss. And so then, when we had the meeting tonight, I don't know, I didn't know if you wanted, 'cause we can't discuss any of these issues.
I mean, here is the time to discuss it.
So, I withdrew, I don't know if I should have formally withdrawn my name.
This election would supersede everything before. This is for the new, the next year's positions. So what is, once you make this election, everything from last year is over.
Correct, the last one was temporary. We had to have the temporary, 'cause the people moved on, so we had to temporarily fill the seats.
Yes.
They resigned and moved on, so that's why we did it.
There's nothing in the procedure, what you're doing with these elections is not specifically quasi-judicial, you're not making a decision on a piece of property. So you're more than able or willing, you're more than allowed, to go ahead and discuss things, as you would in any election process. You could accept nominations and seconds, and give the person an opportunity to talk about it. If you're nominating someone who's not here, you just, you know, that's what happens, if you don't show up, you get elected for things.
I think that's how I became second vice chair five years ago.
That could be it.
Yes.
So, you are able to discuss other things that are not specifically on your agenda as quasi-judicial. Not everything you do is under those same strict constraints.
Outside of a meeting?
No, you, you should discuss them inside the meeting, but even when you're legislative, it's best that you do that.
Thank you.
Discuss things inside the meeting.
Well, I would nominate somebody who has been on the commission for second vice chair for a while, as in Dennis Carr, or Sunny, or, Michael, I know he's very, he's a resident, lifelong resident of Madeira Beach. He went to Madeira Beach Middle School, Elementary School. So that's why I thought he would be a good, good person in a leadership role. So, does anybody have anything else to say? I mean, is there anybody that you would prefer to be second vice chair, or?
Well, I think it would be good to give Robin a chance, she's explained some.
Well, she's first vice chair.
I'm first.
Yeah, so now we need a second.
No.
Now, it doesn't matter, anybody, you have anything?
I do. Sunny, Sunny Flynn has been our second vice chair, and Sunny is an active member of the community. Obviously, if she was second vice chair, she wanted a leadership position, so I would honor that, and I would nominate Sunny Flynn to serve for this year, even though she's not here, I hope she, as second vice chair.
Excuse me, but she is not going to reapply. So she's no longer on the board, I'm sorry.
Okay, I will withdraw that.
Well, then I would, I would say let's go nominate Dennis Carr, he's the next one who's been on the commission the longest.
I second that.
Can we have the vote?
Yes. First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Cliot?
Chernobyl.
Yes.
Sorry.
I have to think about it for a moment. I honestly don't know Dennis that well, and, just give me a second to think about it. He's been on, he's been on the commission for a while.
He's a, very knowledgeable in the construction industry, and has been a resident of Madeira Beach for a while, and he's been serving.
Yes. Thank you. And Chernobyl?
Okay, moving on.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Linda, could we have a list from staff, then, who, 'cause Sunny's, when is, like, of our names now, and when our terms will expire? I mean, could that, could you get that together, and Flynn can email it or something?
Sure, we can provide that, yes.
'Cause, when does Sunny go off?
She did about two weeks ago, so she's not gonna reapply.
So we're gonna have?
So I guess her term ended.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear that.
The next item I wanted to talk to you about is training. Some of the new members had asked about training. Typically, in other communities I've served, I do individual training for members as they come on, assuming that the former members are well-versed, probably because I had already trained them, and they've got lots of experience. But I did wanna bring the issue before the board, and see if, especially given all the quasi-judicial considerations and the way we present facts, and the way that you formulate your recommendations, in order to make sure that the procedure goes through without any legal hitches. I think it may be beneficial for at least some of the training to be provided to the whole board to go over this. Now, you've got the memorandum that the attorney's offered, but if you have a chance, then to go over that detail and formulate some questions, maybe we could just have a workshop at some point, where we can talk freely and openly go over those details. And I'd also then wanna talk, do training, or at least the new members, and anybody else who's interested, on just general planning practice, things that sometimes take a while to come before you, but you don't wanna be surprised by, just theory and practice, and why we're going, and what's been happening in planning lately.
I think that's a great idea, I would like to attend that.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. Very good idea, thank you, Linda.
What I'd like to do then, I'll get with the chair and come up with some proposed dates, and maybe bring that back to you. Since it wouldn't require a vote, if the chair could make some recommendations, and maybe we can even get everybody to respond, email what would work. This is gonna be an informal training process, so we don't have to advertise or anything like that. All right? That'd be great, thank you. And then, the final thing is your calendar. Well, there's actually two other things, I guess. The calendar is one of them, you have a list of meetings that is formulated based on your wanting to meet on Mondays, the first Monday of every month. Sometimes that Monday is gonna land on a holiday, and your procedures say that when that happens, the chair with the agreement of the board can, can cancel that meeting and establish another one. That's a little bit cumbersome, and we know ahead of time it's gonna be a holiday. What I would like, and there are some cases where your meetings fall on things like New Year's Day, obviously, we aren't gonna be here. So, I'd like to go ahead and, and go over that with the chair, and propose changed meeting schedules ahead of time for the year, because it's very important, not only you can, you know, meet your calendar, know what's happening in your calendar, but we also want the public, especially those who need to apply for some sort of a meeting or a petition or review, to know well in advance when their deadlines are. Because each time you change a meeting, it backs, backs into schedules for deadlines and cutoffs and things of that nature. So I'd like to go through the whole year's calendar, and then I'd like to be able to come back to you in six months, and then do the next year, so that we've always got about a year's worth of meetings ahead of, ahead of you already scheduled, so people can plan ahead. And then the other thing that came up is, just in review of the code, currently you're meeting on the first Monday, the ordinance specifies you will meet on the second Monday, and your procedures say you meet on the second Monday at seven, and you can change the time to another time if you'd like, but it doesn't say anything about changing the date, because it can't, the procedures can't trump the authority of the ordinance. So I understand that it was moved in order to provide more time between this meeting and the commission meeting, which makes complete sense. Most places, the plan board, the planning commission does meet at a bigger gap than the next day with the commission, because you can't really get everything pulled together in one day, which means that everybody who gets an approval, or has an item before the planning commission, has to wait a full month to go to the city commission, especially for. for complex things. So what we need to do, though, is propose an ordinance change for the code of ordinances and take that to the commission to validate the change in dates. So I'd like to bring that back to you at your next meeting as well.
Very good.
Let's put that on the agenda.
Yes.
Well, welcome aboard, thank you. Those are great ideas, and I look forward to...
Straightening that out.
Tightening the ship a little bit, if you will.
Very good.
There's always changes that come over time.
And I think everybody likes the 6 o'clock time better. It's a little hard for me today, just because of the storm work, but that'll start easing up here as we go on. Okay, if that's it, then our next meeting, we'll just keep it November 6th, is that okay, until we get that one on the agenda at 6:00 PM? We don't need to vote on that, right? We're just, that's good?
No.
All right, then the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Oops.
Move to adjourn.
What's that?
Move to adjourn, yes.
Oh, I moved to adjourn.